The exact salary is unknown at this point, so the budget number represents the existing salary. And then the other thing too is inspectional services, as you all know, there's been some changes in the hours within that department. Which made it a little bit, I don't want to challenge you, but we're trying to best represent the changes in the budget, but also protecting ourselves in case for some reason the arrangement in the hours do need to change. So just be aware of that as well as you go through.
So, yeah, could you explain?
Explain what we agreed to before you were here?
Sure.
In the case of inspection services and where we are right now, as briefly as possible.
Absolutely. So Glenn retired, he was our building inspector for the town house who's been service here, or servicing the town for decades. And he has, congratulations, soon he's retired officially. And he was working both Topsfield and Newberry?
West Newbury.
West Newbury, thank you. And he will no longer be working in West Newbury and has reduced his hours for retirement purposes below full time. In corresponding move, Diane, who serves as the window downstairs, she went from twenty-four hours to thirty-two hours to provide customer service during those times when Glenn might have otherwise been in the building.
So that's, that's the net of it, was this thirty, twenty-four to thirty-two is the, is the increase in those, in her hours?
Increase, Glenn's increased by going from thirty to eighteen.
Yeah. So now, in the case of Glenn, it went down enough to cover this cost?
It's actually, I think, a net savings to the town.
Yeah, because he was down twelve hours.
Because West Newbury was paying some and you were paying some.
No, they were two separate, we weren't totally separate. He, he was here for thirty hours is what he got paid for, totally separate from West Newbury, that was just a side that he worked on another job. He was paid for thirty hours, now he's paid.
Here in Topsfield?
In Topsfield. Now he'll get paid for eighteen, it's a difference of about twenty-five thousand dollars. What we did in the budget however, because of the arrangement is a six-month review. He's talked about it in his part too, but he doesn't know that he wants to do it when he's retired. So what we chose to do is we funded it in full in, as his line item, and we didn't make the change to the administrative assistant either. So if, if doesn't work out, there's still money in the budget to hire a person. If it does work out, there'll be a savings of probably about ten thousand in that account, ten, ten to twelve thousand.
So being conservative and protecting us if it doesn't work.
I'm not sure I follow how, just bear with me for a second, just this is back of an elbow.
Sure.
Glenn worked two days a week here, Tuesdays and Thursdays, from seven AM to one PM there about, let's say the whole day. So that's eight hours, times two is sixteen. I, I never understood that he worked thirty hours here, or a week, that we worked, that he worked, that, that doesn't make sense.
He was in the building for those hours.
Supposedly those were office hours.
He was not in the building for those hours, he was in the building from eight to ten on Tuesday and eight to ten on Thursday. I mean, if all the numbers work out, fine, but it's, I, I can't, maybe I should discuss it at a different time to try to understand.
How is it that you can go from thirty to twelve with no impact to the town, or eighteen?
Yeah, and still do the same job.
And still do the same job.
Something is, okay, I'll, I'll talk offline on this, you can, you can educate me on it, because I, I can't do it on the back of an elbow, but I'll catch you, thank you.
I think his response was that he's losing twelve hours, but she's gaining eight, and a lot of what they need is administrative and by the window as opposed to come out in the field.
The explanation and our understanding of what actually was going on, it's a conversation offline.
Yeah.
And Kevin should follow up with Mr. Gant on that.
But I, I'm glad it's being removed in six months, because that's not the motion. And so i- if that's his understanding, that's good, because we want to make sure he is actually working out for the town.
Yep.
Yes.
And we did agree to that six-month review.
Not in the motion.
Not in the motion.
No, really.
That was removed.
By the way, let me understand that too, I understand that somebody who's retired has, is able to come back and work roughly half the time, nine hundred and sixty hours, but there's no requirement to, to not come back for a year or something? That's often the case in industry. Here, he, it's apparently, he's able to come back and start working right away?
I don't know, and I kind of wondered the same thing, that would, it was just kind of kind of between, you know, Barbara and Jackie, and having asked Jackie that, that would be, that would be a concern.
Would you just take a note down on that, so we don't get caught into something, we did something wrong?
If you divide nine hundred and sixty by fifty-two, it comes to eighteen.
And that's, that's standard, I mean, nine sixty is a given.
You're wondering about the year, the year lay, the year in between.
This is the one thing that sometimes, and I don't want to get caught doing something.
Yep. That's worth checking.
No, I mean, because technically it's already genuine.
So the last couple ones I'll just mention, highlight, Board of Health, we've budgeted for a couple of services. One of them is deceased animal pickup, it really is not a formal means, so we've gone through a process of at least identifying a way to handle those situations and putting dollars to it. When we get to that line item, I can give you a lot more detail on it, but there's, it's just something to flag for you, as well as the flu vaccines, which historically have increased in, in participation, and as a result, the cost has gone up and it's been absorbed by other line items within the budget. So we're trying to more accurately project what that flu vaccine costs are.
Is that necessary for a town to do?
My only other experience is yes, we did it as well, it's a, it's a great service to the community and it's.
Are dead animals?
No.
No vaccines, flu.
We've cursed a lot.
No, we've moved on to flu.
But yes, we, my last experience as well, the animals pickups was something we budgeted for as well.
I, I just ask, because I know these free flu vaccines, they're covered by their insurance, they come in and they, you know, recharge their insurance as would any pharmacy.
We do get reimbursed by and large on that. If somebody comes in, they have no insurance and don't have a flu shot, I doubt very much that we turn them away.
We totally don't.
We cannot turn them away, whether they're from Topsfield or from someplace else, but on that would, great.
You could make up some of the costs, but if the money, if money comes in from the state, it's going to go into the general fund.
Yeah. Which is why it needs to be a full line item.
From the, from the state, it's, it's coming from Medicare or from, from insurance companies is what's coming in. And we pay ten percent to, for Worcester somewhere, to do the billing for us, to do all the paperwork for us.
Yes.
And then that money comes into the town treasury.
Yep.
That's how that works. So what's, what's the real question?
This is costing us more money, and before we had to absorb it in other line items, so the cost difference has gone up.
My understanding is, talking with Wendy, is that there's been an increase over the years of participation. I, I made a note just to, to circle back with her and just get a little better clarity on the reimbursement component, because I'm not being a health person, I don't have that expertise.
So if it really did cost us more, we're, we're getting, we're covered in the revenue because it's coming in as spoke free, free cash.
Well, not, not completely.
It's not completely?
No, not. And, and part of the reason for the increase is that it was a central location for it now here, that the, the number of vaccines they gave almost doubled from what they had done previously.
Okay, we ought to understand what it is.
The other thing too is, the flu season started early this year, it was all over the news, and I think many people started thinking, oh, and then suddenly they see the announcement and will tend to come. If flu season comes late, some folks say, well, I haven't gotten it yet, and you get fewer folks, so just the varies of.
Catherine, how many people come in without insurance to us?
I don't have an information, I can ask Wendy for it though, if she has that information, she'd.
Because health insurance does cover it, everywhere you go, so whether we, they come to us.
If you come with health insurance, yeah, exactly.
Right, that's why I wondered how many come in without any insurance.
Yeah, we'll make sure, I, I'll certainly follow up with her on some of those more specific questions around that.
When we get to the work session, again, we're not trying, I appreciate the question, it's great today, but the, when we get to Board of Health, that's one of the, in one of the work sessions, that's when it'd be very important to kind of have that backup information, so we kind of know where we were at.
Yeah, so it's good to raise it now, because it gives you some time to do the light work.
So I understand it's an issue, we don't have an answer, it's one too.
Yep, we'll certainly get the backup for it. And Wendy's been very thorough with her, with her budget when I've gone through with her, so I know she's got some actuals we can look at.
Yep, it's good.
Last, two items I want to mention, last, first of the two is on the fire department side. And we have a special guest here today. Chief, thank you for joining us.
This, this didn't happen by accident, you know, apparently.
No, it did though, I'm so embarrassed, I sent you guys, you know, I worked late last night, early this morning, and it got stuck in my outbox, so then I looked and I saw it was it, so then I came, because I figured you'd get it, so here I am.
We've been huddled around a computer the last couple days. So there is, there is, within the budget, it represents an increase to provide twenty-four seven coverage from a fire standpoint. Life safety, it's, it's incredibly important to have the resources available. Being a Topsfield where the ambulance service is located relative to us, the time it takes to get to Beverly, for example, is near this hospital, it can be life or death situation. So the chiefs put some, some information together, but we'll get into more detail obviously, around what that model will look like. But it's, it's an important one that we should spend some real time on, because it's important for the community, it's important that we, we're comfortable with what we're looking at as well. Chief, do you want to mention anything?
No, I just, we're, it's just finishing up the model that we started last year, so it's the Sunday to Thursday night, from midnight to six AM, and I just put in for two qualified firefighters during that time. So that way we'd be, then the task becomes then getting people to actually fill those shifts. So it's helped out tremendously the time that we've had this year, where we've had people in the station. We've had real, real positive outcomes because of that. And I, we have had over twenty times in this fiscal year already where no one from the fire department or only one person has responded to incidences in Topsfield during that midnight to six AM time. So, and that one person is me, and that, another chief is not going to do that. So we have to set it up, I mean, no, it's, it's, it's the same thing that we've said for years, that you can't run a twenty-four hour, seven service with people not there. So it's just to finish up that, those five nights from midnight to six AM.
Is that for fire or for medical?
Both, everything.
Yeah, everything.
It's hard to, you, it's for all hazards, it's for everything.
It's really hard to defeat you budget-wise, I think.
It is, it is, yep, it is, but, but it's for, it's for who, who knows what, it's for, you know, carbon monoxide.
You never know what's coming.
Yeah, you don't, and you can't expect, the police officers can't be doing it, they can't do, they don't have the equipment to do carbon monoxide calls, fire calls and stuff like that, so.
So to be, your responsibility, obviously, to have one of those call firefighters if you, if you got EMT certified, or all call firefighters? All are, okay. So that there would be that first level of medical attention and.
Oh, yeah.
Obviously calls for other things if necessary.
Yeah, usually the way I have it right now, one shift, they're both required to be EMTs, but also one of the people is required to be an operator of the, of a engine, so that you also have a pump operator, so you have the.
If necessary.
You have the ability to either go with the ambulance or the fire truck, whichever one you need, so. I mean, it's a, for, you know, sixty-five thousand dollars, it's a good.
First response, since I've been on the job, there's been a few incidences where they've had to respond heroically, and it, it grows the challenges, we're very fortunate that the team we have is also.
The other thing it sounds like to me, Jen, is that we've been sort of inching up for years and years and years.
Well, it's a national trend.
This is, this is kind of the last inch, not in terms of depth, but in terms of coverage.
Right, it's a baseline, and then.
A baseline, but it covers twenty-four seconds.
Right, and it is a remarkable milestone to get to, we're decades behind, but it's a national trend. You know, like I said, my challenge then is to find people to, to man those shifts.
Right.
Because that's, that's really hard.
But you'd like that challenge compared to not having the twenty-four seconds?
I would, absolutely would, yeah, yep.
Is in the budget, Jen, whatever that approach is, that you're going to try to entice people to take those, those shifts? Is that all incorporated into whatever?
To some degree, yes, but the real work comes to, from you guys, to negotiate the contracts, because the, there's, it's kind of, the kind of, the activities has shifted in the fire department, and it's almost like a different, it's, it's not a different classification, but they're, they're not necessarily call firefighters, because they can't come on calls, because they don't live very close, but more like a per diem or something like that, and maybe if there were minimum standards of shift coverage and stuff like that, that would be, I would hope that there'd be support from the board selectmen and negotiations, because those contracts are open. And I think that people would be favorable to that too, so, but that definitely is, that, that's why the increase in the budget, yeah.
Last thing I'll cover for today is, I, one thing I've, I've heard a lot about is economic development downtown and other, other places. Seems to be a real, well, great leadership behind it and a vision as well. And I've heard a few times people mentioning the idea of potentially a part-time planner, either a third or half or something like that. That planner position is not included in this budget for the reasons we talked about earlier. For me personally, it's a little too soon to assume those types of costs. I, I certainly want to have a better understanding of, of really what that looks like. But I bring it up today because we'll be presenting the formal budget on Monday, and I'm curious what you folks think about a part-time planner, and it's very preliminary, if there's an interest at all in that idea, what I would do is I'd do a little more due diligence, sort of pursue what a job description would look like, where the needs would go, where the time would be spent, and then present that back to you as well. But just, I want to just kind of get a sense for you folks, the conversation, you know the community as well as anybody, if there's, if there, what you, what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I'd defer to the expert here, the two experts that are here that have been involved in that, and I've read the MAPC proposal, which I thought was a beautiful document, I mean, it's really impressive stuff, and they talk about the need for a planner, so. I will shut up at this point in time and let you guys tell me whether or not you.
Well, I definitely think a person is needed, now whether it's a, a person who comes on and is an employee or whether it's contracted, or whether we get someone in conjunction with another town, because I, I'm not sure we need to go full-time at this point. But I do think, if you looked at that plan and the number of things that are laid out there, that's not something that someone in the town hall currently could assume as a responsibility.
That is, that is a complicated plan, and I'm telling you, it is beautiful.
They're number piece parts, and as much as I know Kevin, you're going to be involved, you've got so many other areas that you're driving forward. I, I just don't think, time-wise, that you could assume that responsibility, so I, I would recommend that we do pursue it.
Yeah, I, I agree very much with Lynn on that, and there's so many other things, I know talking with Martha Morrison, someone to help us work on housing policy and so on, we have the zoning board of appeals and so on, and there's not a home for that, and we need to have a home for it. One of the most common complaints people have about developers and economic development is, so where do you start? It's just like, you know, a Gordian's knot, where do you pull to make something happen? And if, I'm going to give you just, this is illustrative, illustrative example, not a specific idea necessarily, but if somebody was going to put in a new restaurant or do a business or something, there's one office they could stop in, they could give their plumbing permit if it was filled out properly, they could give all their applications, one place where they had the opportunity for one-stop shopping as part of their responsibilities, plus housing policy, plus, I think we need a long list on that. My guess is this year is not enough time to really think through how we would justify that as much, let alone the possibility of hiring. But I very much like the idea of taking, I think you expressed it very well, taking the long hard look, seeing what a job description might be, really talking about among ourselves. The experience of most towns who have them, and by the way, most towns around us do, is that the economic development that ensues more than covers the cost of the salary, although it doesn't feed back, the grants don't feed back into the salary pot, they feed back into other places, in projects and so on, that represent benefits but don't have to be funded by other parts of the budget and so on. So my expectation is that grant writing would be a key part of that individual's responsibility, and that I would frankly kind of expect that they would basically pay for their costs to us indirectly, but through grants and so on we could benefit from, but I think it's definitely worth looking into.
Yeah, and I would say, I know it seems like it's early and we don't have all the ducks in a row, we do have a plan, we do have the momentum. We have the support of the town for implementing what was put into that plan. And I think there are some vehicles, some funding sources that we can talk about to make that happen. I don't think it would be a large expenditure on the part of the town or that would have to go into the budget for this, but I think that role is key.
Yep.
I mean, if we do nothing at this point after putting together the plan, and then there's nobody to help move this forward or make some of these things happen, and some of them are definitely doable within a year. Or just start laying the groundwork, as you had said, with the grants, so that we have that money come six to nine months out. I, I think the town's going to be very disappointed in that the momentum and the support from the businesses that we've gotten is going to stall.
Are you suggesting we move forward with a part-time planner, or?
Non-employee, no, I, I think contracted services, and we have some options and we have some funding, so I think.
Possibly a limited level of contract, I'm going to toss in a number here, but, because it's so, it's less than we pay a third-time person, but even ten thousand dollars possibly for contracted services when we might need them, for instance, if frankly, we could pay that to a grant writer and get that back in spades, if there were things we wanted to do. The only difference is that the kinds of things you get grants for are usually not things that you put in a budget. There are benefits that pay back, as, you know, in this case, I don't think we would have as a capital item or as a operate, we were operating as a capital item, I don't think we would have voted to do the strategic plan, but they dropped it on us, and we're benefiting from it, and those are the kinds of things that we hope are going to drive the town forward. Frankly, I'd like to create enough more economic activity in the town that it becomes very clear the town's benefited between meals taxes, increase in the value of businesses, more businesses here, that we see a noticeable increase, it would be nice if we went from seven percent to ten percent even of our tax bill paid by the businesses.
And, and just to add on to, the, the, the state dropping those grants in our lap was the result of many months of work on our part, that didn't just come about.
A lot of grant writing going on here.
And, and we just can't keep that up, we can't expect the board to continue to do that level of work. But that, that took months of work to get those two grants to come in, so this doesn't happen by itself.
One other comment, I, you've, I, I think you specifically, Kevin, and Catherine, you as well, you've heard some issues today that we have some long-term ideas about things that we'd like to do and things we'd like to fix. Seems to me that you, being here for a whole month already, seems to me you got a pretty full plate already, and I think you need to be careful about, we need to be careful about just keep pushing more and more on him. Let, let's get through this stuff, let's get through the budget process, then we can start talking about the long-range ideas about things we'd like to do.
Are, are you saying, boy, do you thought was not to pursue a planner, or?
I, I think at this point in time, no, I agree with what, what you ought to do. Let's take a look at that plan that the MAPC gave us and see what we can do on our own, taking advantage of you again.
Yeah, you know, that's not doable to expect us to drive that into implement. There are probably eighteen things on that list to do in the first year.
Yeah, no question, there's a lot of them.
One of the things that might be helpful, again, I would like to see, personally, I would like to see a little bit of money put in that could be used and establishes the fact that investing in economic development is important. There is going to continue to be far more value invested in the form of volunteer labor ideas and help than in what we pay for. I personally would like to see a line item, modest as it might be, even if it's only five thousand dollars, that we could think about using, and frankly, between now and when we sort of, well, because selectman's office comes at the beginning there, but have to talk about and make a decision, to me, that's a worthwhile thing. My talks with John Guido some time ago, when I mentioned that there seemed to be some momentum among people who were already engaged in development thinking and development activities, that we would need a planner recognizing that the town isn't there yet, but, because maybe a few people, a little more there after we have the thing upstairs, but I think sort of, if you will, putting it on the radar and giving a little bit of advantage and so on. And it might also help provide some support in terms of if the process, I'd like to see for FY21, our ability to at least initiate the process of really looking and maybe engaging, so, even if it's very part-time, think of like Glenn, for instance, what if he was willing?
I think Glenn is perfect, and there is some outside financing that we can tap into.
We can match it.
And that's pretty much the same approach that we use to hire facilities guys, okay? And so let's put a line item there and put a few dollars there.
If we put money in there, the state will look upon it very favorably, and is much more likely to match it for us, and that maybe the thought of a position, whether it's contract, you mentioned three alternatives, might be an FY22, but I think we've got to in FY21, start the process.
And I think it shows commitment on our part, there are a number of people who are willing to work with us in town, but if they don't see any commitment on our side, that there's going to be some dedicated resources to help move this forward, I think we're going to lose that support.
And I personally would like to see ten thousand, if it would be acceptable, that is, in the overall town budget, very small. Worst we could do is not find things we needed for, for FY21, in which case we could go carry it over. But I think having that flexibility, there might be some project that comes along where we wanted to hire a planner, you know, somebody comes into town and says, I'm committed to building a restaurant here, I need to know where and how. Nobody could do that now, and that might be something we would pay a bit of a contract fee to have help them.
And we're looking at an experienced person, you know, we would be lucky to bring in someone who's done this before so they can hit their ground running. We tried to assume that in the town, people who are doing other jobs that don't have any understanding of this.
We already know at least one person who is very experienced, he did the job in Ipswich.
Are there any, who's that, Gibbs?
Yes, Glenn Gibbs.
Are there any part-time planners around that you know or heard about?
Well, that would be somewhat, not till this is all taken care of, so, but starting, you know, in June or whatever, and you, Kevin, you have to triage all these long list of things we're saying, but at some point, I think it would be to start reaching out when you talk, so I say, by the way, we're looking for planners, see what else other people are doing and so on. I don't know whether Georgetown, Raleigh, and places like that have planners, but there may be, I'm going to guess there are other town governments that are thinking about if they don't already have some kind of planning help, and that might be something where we could work out an arrangement that was collaborative and would save us money and help us ramp up. But I'll tell you, even a third-time person properly used would be vast help in getting going.
You know, my experience in Beverly and what we, we were able to accomplish there, and what was happening before our time, there's, there's so much great momentum here that's similar, and there's so much potential in Topsfield that I, that I can see. And it feels to me that the community is seeing that as well, and, you know, as you said earlier, I shared, there's, there's some momentum happening right now, so putting some funds in here, I think is a great idea. It's, it's a step forward to show people we're taking it serious, and hopefully, it's, the same way I, I got excited when I came to Topsfield, somebody's going to look at it, especially a planner, and they're going to say, wow, you know, I can, I can make my mark here in Topsfield, we can do something great for the downtown, and downtowns and communities are so essential to their success. It's, it's, it's vital to, to a town, and the fact, the fact that you all recognize that is really, really great. So I'll, I'll make sure we incorporate that for Monday's budget, and then we can have a discussion on if that number, whatever, at time, or if it makes sense to go one way or the other, and what that looks like.
Well, I think what we do is we put it and present it, much as, you know, for Monday's presentation, I think a lot of it for the public good and it being, this will be available on Facebook perhaps, but there'll also be for folks who look at it on the website. I think when we do our January ninth working session and we get to the selectman's budget, that's when I think we take that step in, sort of thinking, how much, how do we want to frame it, things like that, but.
And I'll do as much due diligence as I can, just get some feelers about what a, a third-time, half-time, what that, what the demographic will look like, what interest might be out there further down the road, but also for consultants.
And Gibbs retired?
He is retired, because he, he worked very closely for years with Tim Collins because of the, the Upskill project and so on and so forth. He's on very good relations with, with Tim and is interested in helping Topsfield. I mean, he doesn't want a full-time job by any stretch, but it's something that, we already have an agreement that he's interested in helping, and that there might be. that he's interested in helping and that there might be a way to use him. I can't say what that would be from a town paying point of view. But it's worth considering because he's already indicated an interest in potentially, you know, helping us out.
Does he live in Ipswich?
He does.
He still lives there?
Yep, he still does. And he knows everybody and he's an idiosyncratic individual, but he's talented and has a successful record.
And the new nonprofit has potentially agreed to help pay the services. So we would have financial support, but I think we need to show the town is just as serious.
So it sounds to me like you've got some money in your pocket that you weren't telling us.
No, that's what I said, that we had the alternative sources.
One last thought on the economic development front. It is very exciting to me. I'm gonna, as I've said to all, I want to make you all proud. And I'm gonna make sure to do best by the time I possibly can, but I'll do whatever it takes, whatever I can to help push that ball forward when it comes to economic development side, you know, outside of regular hours, whatever it is. You know, whatever I can do to help that because I think it's really important.
I'm sure you will and I'm impressed with your enthusiasm, but like I said.
My wife appreciates it more than anyone.
This is number one for the town.
I'm curious about funding that. We are interested in doing it this year. I would suggest that we do perhaps what we've done with the facilities last year. And that is essentially put it as a warrant article that we put in. That gets buy-in from the people. Budget is a buy-in, but it's like buried. And you make it a warrant article and it's a bird cliff and the people.
And it gives, and it gives you a chance to talk about it to town media.
And then that shows a strong buy-in.
I also love that because it's a great marketing approach too to let the town know.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
The commitment is on.
They're buying into it and things like that.
Yeah, and I think that's an excellent idea.
The second thought is that we really should though, look at our organization chart. I'm not talking about people, I'm talking about organization chart. And the organization chart we have includes a community development purchasing agent, purchasing coordinator, whatever. So about a decade and maybe a little bit more ago, we had a land use coordinator. And then that changed into a community development coordinator. So we have a title within the town. It's part-time and it was, and it justified the person that got that job because it wasn't a full-time job for purchasing and whatever else. So we should be cognizant of what our organization chart is and what we're planning to do with that and how we might work whatever we're talking about here into that or explain why. That's one thing and this is something else and whatever else. Because people will remember these things. I certainly do. So we need to understand that and that's just a consideration there.
Planity, but, oh, vanity. Planning comes under community development and if there's already kind of an envelope that's been opened once, it might help, as you say, Dick, sort of say, we're easing into the time, coming into the time when we need to think about actually fulfilling that before. I like the fact that we build on the past. That's always good.
So I'll put some more information together around what them I look like and I'll include.
That's great.
Good. So that's it for sort of highlights I was going to cover today on the operating side. Do you have any questions for the operating side at this point? I know you will soon.
We'll have a lot of Monday problems.
The goal of this was to get this into the hands, our hands. The formal presentation, which will cover some of the same information for the benefit of the public, will be made on Monday. And that's when we get the official non-draft version as of that time. And then we will, and I'll make a point of making clear that we have public sessions for the next three Thursdays when we will be discussing sections of the budget. When they come, it's their time to find out and learn as we learn. And if we have issues and questions and changes we feel are necessary, we will go. That's when we do the detailed line-by-line discussion. Monday will not be the time for that. But the idea of putting three work sessions for that is twofold. One, I want to be sure we have plenty of time. And the second thing is, I'm particularly concerned doing work sessions because, Dick, you're not going to be here in town, physically in town.
When are you leaving, Ben?
Sunday the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I feel strongly that.
Five days.
I feel strongly that our full board of four should be here, physically present. The other thing too, knowing island telephone services, since you'll be on an island. You drop the call once and legally you can't pick it up again. So, I mean legally in terms of the rules that would allow us to do a remote participation. Once they're off, they're off. And so if something happened, we dropped the call, then we've lost the benefit of having.
Well, there was as long as I can and if we drop it then.
Okay, so what are we saying? What are we changing for meetings then? Are we saying we're not?
Ninth, sixteenth and twenty-first, is it?
We're talking about Thursday. We're talking about the next, the next three Thursdays.
The next three Thursdays, I think.
Well, he was just talking about the twenty-seventh, so we'll jump to that in a second.
That's a regular meeting.
That's a regular meeting that you're not going to be here for.
He is not going to be here.
Okay. On the ninth, I can't be here until three thirty. I have a meeting till three thirty.
I can live with that. Yeah, I can live with that.
So does that work for everybody?
As far as I'm.
I'm okay to change that to three thirty.
The only question I have is on the sixteenth, you had requested to have the planning board's E B A talking about the downtown.
How long will that be? I'm asking you and we have no idea. I think what we, here's what that's about in talking with Martha and others. They have a number of ideas that could go on the warrant this year. One is the idea of protecting the common by creating a Topsfield Common District. Protecting it in terms of its aesthetic and its inclusion in the historic zone and all this kind of stuff so that the appearance doesn't change in ways that people I'm sure would be very unhappy about. But also protects it in terms of there are buildings around the common that need to be maintained. And goes everything from the church that is trying to do, you know, trying to get some money to do their maintaining. Frank Martino seems to be doing fine with the commons, but, you know, he'd like to do better and maybe do more things. There's, you know, two privately owned homes, the Roseman's and the Lopez home and so on, which might benefit from the ability to entertain additional uses, but very limited uses such as guest house, possibly certain offices, possibly restaurants, all within the existing, you know, footprint. So we're not talking about extensions, changes or new buildings without requiring anybody to make any changes at all. So on that basis, I thought it was worth us hearing from the planning board on that. They're also, they have been talking, not with us directly, but so I want to hear. It turns out, I believe, that the D P W yard is not currently in the Business Village District. And they want to share with us, they're thinking about whether we might want to do that because it would allow certain uses there that currently would not be allowed. And so it's to present the idea. We can make a decision if we want to, whether any of these are worth including in the warrant. But the goal is to just get in touch with what they're thinking about. So they're going to talk, I believe, solely about potential zoning changes that might be of value to the town.
Would they be talking, I know that Martha's been talking about the expanding the business district to include the commons? Have those two private homes?
We talked about that, but the problem if you include, if you expand the Business Village up there, there's no reason you couldn't put a hair salon in the Lopez house. And the general feeling is that's not what we're looking for. That if we made a separate Topsfield Common District, that they could be a far more restricted to the uses.
And they would be included in that common, Topsfield Common District.
They would, yeah, would, basically, and again, they will tell us what they think. But the conversation we've had so far is all the properties adjacent to North Common, East Common and Main Street would be included in that, but no further. But it would just be enough to protect the views that we see so that, because right now we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place. And many of those places, if they were to go on the market, they could only be sold as single family homes. And it's, we know in a couple of cases that the cost of renovation would make that a prohibitive cost for someone. We don't want to see it just fall down and then something, you know, circa two thousand architecture get put up in his place because he can't afford anything else. So we're trying to sort of save what's there and give it more capability to be maintained by the owners without changing the physical. And I might say in terms of the prospect of including a restaurant and maybe even a guest house as permitted uses in that area, all T B D, provide services to the town citizens because some people have family who come and would like to stay in town. And certainly, many people have said, well, if you had a nice restaurant in. My feeling is a, what I call a twinkly light restaurant of modest size somewhere up on the common would be, in my view, an excellent start on our minimum two restaurants downtown that I think the town deserves to have and would help spark the economic vitality of downtown. Because there's some great ideas, I won't go into them, but Kevin and I have been talking about this and he's already opened my mind to a couple of fairly simple things that could change everybody's feeling about downtown when you start making that happen. And I think this is potentially a way with, I don't see what the risk is to anyone, but.
Has Martha and the planning board seen your M A P C proposal?
We discussed it.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of stuff in there that are going to involve the planning board.
Oh, yes.
Could I come back to, you went through increases from your list. Everything that you talked about increases is not in this, correct?
It's not representative.
In this budget?
It's mentioned on the far right column.
As comments, but not in dollars. There's nothing, nothing in here. The other things that you said are increases are not included yet.
Correct.
Just to clarify.
Yep, they're low, but you'll notice that every other category zero percent, which meets the thincom's budget guideline. And so the additionals are outside.
All of this is still to be discussed. Let's try to get it through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all. Just, well, a couple of last things about the budget later that I just want to mention too. Talked to the chair, possibly doing a budget open house hosted here, it was the end of this month, maybe early February. Where anyone from the public that might have any questions as we're going through this process, basic or.
Question and answer.
Just, yeah, I'll just, I'll be available, walk people through what's in the budget. If someone would like to discuss it, answer questions, go over a little bit of what's within it, sort of like what we're doing today. Just so people in the community have an understanding of, you know, what's behind it. Because again, you can look at the ink and you can look at what's on there, but there's always a story behind the line of what's there. The more opportunity I have and the team have to sort of talk through that with the public, the better. So we don't have anything scheduled yet, but it's a tentative, tentative, and I'm calling it open house. It might be a better term for it. It might be branded differently, but it's just an opportunity for people to come in. And I always appreciate, I appreciate a chance to talk to the public about what will work out.
And Kevin, one of the things I had suggested to you is considering the idea of having two sessions. One would focus just on the Article Three, this budget, which is a big, big piece, just on the operating pieces. And another one on capital. Because what happens, and we've had Steve Waylon, the moderator, has held some forms. We're starting to get better at that, but what tends to happen is we tend to kind of march through this long list. And because this comes at the very beginning, it's kind of a sense that in the two and a half hours or whatever we set aside, it's not time to get into this in more detail. I think if there was a meeting to allow people to ask questions about this in particular, provide some summaries of where things could go and so on and so forth, it will help people in, for those who come to something like that, see that this is one piece of our thinking. Capital, we kind of treat differently, but we have to look at as living in the same house as this. So I'm not trying to put you on the spot by putting that out right now, but I think.
I think it's a great idea. No, I think it's a great idea.
And making really clear that there are two pieces would be very useful.
Early on so that inputs can be effective in some way if there's a cost and it's a process. Excellent. So we change the process a little bit, but it's good change.
Well, that's a good change and how we do that, when we do that, and definitely including those kinds of things. I will expect to see when next year, next fiscal year, when you, after all this, you have time to sort of think about what's going to be the budget calendar going forward. Because the earlier we do that, the more the public can see it while it's in its formative stages, the better.
Excellent.
So we're trying to evolve into a less frenetic, more open and transparent process for everybody.
Which is great. That's something we started to talk about a year ago, which is improving our communication.
Yep.
Excellent.
With the community. And this is a great step.
Yep.
And I know it's public meetings, I'll say it too. Always an open door policy in our office. So if anyone outside of these budget open houses, if you still have a question, the door's open. Come by.
Yep.
Just, we have these listening sessions. Right now they're only once a month. That's not like the now of this one. So that's also available to people as far as communications. We try to make it go.
You might be in, again, I'm not trying to put more on your plate, but you're somebody whose plate always seems to have a corner to slide another meatball on. Here's another meatball. Join Dick at one of his sessions. He's ended up kind of taking them. I did one or two, but Dick's been taking them on a lot more. But that might be an opportunity to go. Sometimes it's one or two people show up, sometimes it's half a dozen.
If you have enjoyed them, great.
And it's really kind of interesting because it's folks like David and others who are kind of following this, not always as openly as you are, who come and want to talk in a smaller place and really walk the back and forth. And you do meet people and it's kind of interesting. You couldn't go all the time.
Sometimes it's the tree out in front of my house is rotting. What are you, how are you going to fix it?
Exactly.
You know, it's the kind of thing also the copper line people may have come if they thought about it. But it's just, it's an opportunity for people to come and ask questions. So can I just talk about the calendar from there? Could you talk on the board? As I remember it, kind of the calendar, you worked very hard on the calendar, I understand. The calendar talks about closing, opening a warrant, I think on Monday, perhaps, and closing it a few weeks later.
The twenty-seventh.
Oh, it is the twenty-seventh?
Sixth and twenty-seventh. It's what's on the calendar currently.
Yeah. I can't understand why we don't keep it open until the end of February. I mean, we're putting, I don't see that we're going to have everything together by the end of, by the twenty-seventh reasonably. And it certainly gives us time to create the warrant as far as being able to publish it March throughout, essentially the month of March. So I'd open that up for discussion as to when we really, really want to close that warrant.
Is there a legal reason we've had to do it so early?
No.
We had the same thought, Dick. I mean, even if we went to the middle of February. I agree. I sort of have wondered if it's a little bit, I mean, because there may still be some, you know, a little bit of fussing around on things on this and I, given the fact we're trying to expand our engagement with the budget process in your first year here, having the time necessary to really talk about this, I think is important and I would definitely support Dick's idea.
I suggest that we think about it and let's talk about it at Monday's meeting as one of the items.
There's no reason not to for Monday's meeting.
Kevin, was there rationale or thinking behind why you did?
I have a really potential, the citizen petitions, because you've got to get your hands around them right away, knowing what's coming in on those. That was, that was the reason why.
Okay.
I would, I would think that that would be the only. If you want to try to limit the number of citizens petition, that could be an issue.
It's not necessarily even limiting. It's just, you're tossing balls up in the air and you just got to know which ones are, you know, what's out there. So, but, I mean, like a department head, if something came down, you know, like a mass law was changing and had to put one on the warrant, it could still go on a warrant, but it's just to, it's just to know what's coming in with citizen petitions. If you push everything to the last minute, it just gets very difficult to manage.
Does the twenty-seventh date pose a hardship for anyone if it closes?
I think if you wanted to extend it, make it a full month or, you know, it would, these dates were based on last year's, you know, just, you know, fixing it into the calendar. I think if you want to extend it, I would extend it a week into February. What is it right now? It's, I think it's.
So why don't you make a recommendation to us on Monday? Kevin, based upon talking with everybody else and the, and Dick's idea, I think extending it at least a week would be a tremendous thing. Also, you'd be here.
I think if you held it open until the end of February, you could find yourself scrambling at the end.
Yeah, which is, we've been working backwards from scrambling to try to tighten it and make sure everybody does their legwork up front so that we're not racing at the end.
Yes.
So we have to also be cognizant of not going back into the trap that we had before.
Yes.
And I'll certainly, I'll make a recommendation, first time ever doing a warrant, to be fair and honest. But I'll do my best to find out from some of my colleagues.
Well, I'm just going to comment, we had to give him, cut him a little slack because he's never done this before.
Whatever it takes, we'll get it done. I just, like I said, I just don't know time-wise how much time it really takes.
Here's the issue. If you cut it on the twenty-seventh, then you got an absolute one, that's it, these are the things. And then every time you add it, you keep moving things and moving things. And the thincom goes a little bit crazy because the numbers are already established and put other numbers in and move it around. Not to say that it wouldn't change later on, but it just seems like, it's great, January, the end of January is just so. We have so much work to do. So I think it's worth it to get a feedback.
Sure. I'm also looking at the fact, we have a board selectman meeting scheduled for the twenty-seventh. And we have one scheduled for the third. My question is, we do not have one scheduled for the tenth and we don't have one scheduled for the seventeenth, President's Day. My question is. My question is, should we consider moving the one from the 3rd to the 10th and making that the close of warrant?
Sounds good to me.
You do, according to the schedule, you have a meeting on the 10th.
I don't think it's a.
You don't have a meeting typically like that.
It's what?
We typically don't do back-to-back.
I realize we don't, and that's why I'm saying that.
It's actually on the schedule for now. We do have the 10th.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Oh, we do have the 10th?
Yeah.
Oh, good lord, he picked that. Okay. Debbie, I need to get a copy. Currently, okay, so maybe I just haven't put it in, I blew that. But if we have one on the 10th, regardless of whatever else. My sense is that that represents a two-week push-out that is meaningful. And I'm afraid a one week won't be a whole lot. And, but I just, what I would appreciate, Kevin, is your recommendation after you talk with other people who are managing the process. And that maybe we consider doing a two-week and certainly make.
Just keep in mind that the rest, what's happening with the rest of the schedule though, because you're already, the draft warrant's put in place. That's, you received that on the 10th. So it closes on the 29th. On the 10th, you have the draft warrant, which is gonna include all these things. So I just.
And you need to.
Yeah, and it doesn't take you a lot within, within 15 days after that. I think, I just would caution about really opening that too far up.
So this is what I would like, is to have you work out what's the rational way to do this. Recognizing that the sense of the board is we would like to extend the closing of the warrant if we can. Even if it is one week, even if we have to have back-to-back board selectmen meetings with short agendas to take care of this stuff. The value of having the extra time, I think, is justified.
We can close it at any time. When we, when we go ahead and open the warrant, we specify we're opening it and it will close on a certain date. We don't have to have a meeting on the date. You can close it at any point. You can say it's closed on that particular date.
So we don't have to vote on it?
Well, we voted on it. When we voted on it, we opened it for this period, today, or from tomorrow until whatever. So it's up to us in one motion.
So there we go. That's a great point, Dick. So maybe we could pick a date when we're not meeting.
Yeah, then I would, you know, I would throw out, is there a problem that we're solving by extending this? The calendar, a lot of thought went into it to have it set up the way it is right now.
What we're potentially doing is, what we're hearing about, a number of things that are gonna be on the warrant arguments, whatever that. I think we've got some questions about the capital. In my mind, we still have, we had presentation possibly by Robin. But I think we still have a lot of work to do on looking at the capital. And each of those capitals are warrant articles, whatever. So the idea was to give us a little bit more time, to try to get it done well.
I totally understand. I, I think we've made a motion towards that. We've got six meetings in January. Six opportunities to take a look at the information that's coming in. We're meeting an awful lot in January, so. I just don't wanna throw off your whole schedule and get us back into kind of frantically, if people think they have a little more time, then they take it up. It's used up.
It's more for citizen petitions, you know, just to be able to manage what's coming and manage the information. You know, we're looking at from the, from the 7th to the 29th, it's over 20 days. It's more days than the department has had to do their own budgets.
Okay. Come up with a recommendation based upon reality and so on. The other thing is.
Don't cut it too, don't extend it too much.
No, maybe wait is really all we need.
If you think it's an issue, then we don't need to do that. I think it sounds like a good idea, but there might be some other issues that you guys know about.
And I'm just not aware of the answer, but you don't have to, you seem to be very familiar. You don't need to vote to close it? I think in the previous year, they voted to close it. That's why I'm just wondering that.
I don't know why you couldn't do one.
We had said it, when we, when we open it, we explain to people when it's open and when it's closed, and that's it. You don't need a vote to close it.
It was a formal vote as well.
But we don't need a formal vote, except open it with a closing date specified. That'd be a great thing for us to do.
Now, when we start changing it though, then we have to open it and do this, and then we have to close it. You can say, we're gonna open it for the next five minutes and now we're.
We haven't opened it yet, have we?
No.
So, so Monday we get to do it in one vote if we want, so we don't have to make, I like the idea of specifying the interval. Make a recommendation. My suggestion would be recognizing that we think we'd like to see a little more time that you form the proposed motion on the basis of the dates you would recommend.
Sounds great. Does that work?
Well, I just, Dick's concern, I believe, is that normally at the end, we wind up jumping into the warrant and jumping out and jumping in and jumping out because of changes. And he's trying to buy some time to eliminate that process.
Are those changes typically new proposals coming through? Or is it changes to the existating warrants?
Not data, not data within the, the warrant is open for items.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not the actual text within it. And so if the dollars change or something like that. However, if in fact we have a warrant article for a certain capital, and we change our mind and say, hmm, this really is more important. We're gonna pull that out of capital. Or Concom says, FinCom says, the money ain't there, guys. Why do you have all that stuff in there? You gotta figure out which ones you're gonna take out. Or they say you got more. So there's, it's kind of changing.
We start jumping the item numbers and it gets really messy, you're right.
Yeah, thank you.
New version, new version.
Right. Yeah, Dick's right. It gets a little crazy when we start getting into that. But I think that those of you who own the process, frankly, I'm more concerned with keeping things running as smoothly in terms of the process. And if, if closing it and then just going through the process of how we make changes later, whatever, is for this point the better way? It's not impossible. This is not a critical item, it's just one working system. So we'll take your recommendation on that.
Because I think this year you started earlier than we did last year, and it wasn't chaotic last year.
Right.
It wasn't bad last year. I agree.
The other thing you just have to keep in mind though is that, you know, you're talking about having the money. We don't have the money for it. We don't really know what we have the money for until we get to school budgets. And those budgets aren't even scheduled to be coming until mid-March. So, you know, there is, there is that level of built-in scrambling.
There we go, yeah, that's right. That's a good point.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
No, I was gonna say.
Yeah, last thing, I just wanted to mention, you know, we went over, Robin went over the capital budget with you folks in the last working session. I'm absolutely welcome any feedback off of that that you might have. Because as we go through the warrant process, which is coming up pretty soon, that all plays. What we wanna consider putting in, what can wait a year if it makes sense to. So if there's any general feedback on that, it doesn't have to be today. And I know our next few working sessions will cover budget and warrant. But maybe there's, we carve out some time just to touch on that capital as well.
One of the things we've talked about and kind of penciled in but didn't go any further on was getting a joint meeting with FinCom. And so penciled in for the 16th, I think, at some point.
No.
Maybe Kevin and I penciled in.
It was kind of on the 22nd, but it hasn't been verified with FinCom.
So I think that is a time when looking at this all and, you know, capital conversations will happen. And that's when I would hope we would get a fairly direct assessment from them on how it looks to that point. Because at that point, the warrant is closed and you're kind of looking at what's there and so on. And then, but I think we do need to have that meeting. That is sort of, you know, shouting across the river. I, let's see less of that as time goes forward. We need to work collaboratively. And I think being in the same room is kind of key to doing that at the start.
Deb, so are these dates finalized? Are these?
That's what you all voted on last May.
Okay.
And it doesn't mean something can't be changed or canceled or.
It's funny, I have different ones, but I'll have to go back.
That's what we voted on back in May.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you do it for the fiscal year, so.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure because I'm doing schedules off of this, so I will work around all these dates.
But they don't have the dates we just talked about, for example.
Right, those are additions too.
Oh, that's my, it's on me, that's not on anybody else. What I will do is, maybe we just make a copy of that.
Work sessions.
Help me out.
Yeah, Deb sent it to me. I asked her to send me the most current because I didn't have a lot of dates in my calendar. I just wanna make sure I wasn't gonna be a problem.
When we get together, we just make a physical copy of that.
So you'll be back then, is my question. Okay.
Okay, good. Kevin, anything else?
Thank you. It's been an exhilarating process, but it's been a good one. It's been a very good process. I've learned more in the last few weeks than I ever imagined, but it's, it's all been very worth it. And I think we have a great budget that the team's put together. Like I said, we'll formally be submitting that to you folks. I'll have a package for you on Monday. We will be sending it out to FinCom as well. And I think tomorrow.
It's scheduled to receive electronically tonight, tomorrow.
Okay.
Can I just summarize a little bit about how good a budget's up? We do need to be a little careful. This does, and everything is relative.